What a great party. And I got to shake this lady's hand, too. You got anything to say, ladies? I mean, you don't have a big...
We have one more here. This is a resolution honoring Chief Greg Miller. Whereas Chief Greg Miller has been appointed to the State of Tennessee Emergency Medical Services Board by the State of Tennessee Governor Bill Lee, and whereas Tennessee Emergency Medical Services Board oversees a statewide EMS system comprised of thousands of paramedics and EMTs and is empowered to establish standards for the activities and operations of emergency medical and ambulance services and to establish model protocols and procedures. And whereas Chief Greg Miller began his career in emergency services in 1990 as a volunteer with the Jefferson County Rescue Squad and with the Lakeway Central Volunteer Fire Department, and in 2018 became the chief of Sumner County EMS, directing an advanced life support service which provides EMS and special operations services answering thousands of calls annually. And whereas Chief Miller is a leader, mentor, and a motivator to all who work for him and is to be commended and recognized for his exemplary dedication to the citizens of Sumner County, and I so move the passage of this recognition.
Motion made by Commissioner Driver, seconded by Commissioner Krueger. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it, Greg. Mr. Sullivan, sir.
Thank you, and this really isn't necessary because the easiest job that I have is to represent Sumner County because it's so easy to represent the best team that I've ever been associated with. So a blessing is defined as something that I feel like brings you closer to God and catastrophes and taking care of people, but those are short-lived events. And here we've been fighting a pandemic that's... They told us it would take two weeks to flatten the curve, and I'm still waiting on that two weeks, one year later. And we've done everything to flatten it that we can flatten it, so I don't know what it's going to take. But you all helped make this easy because everywhere we go, when we have these state board meetings, they know who Sumner County is, and they ask us to share our secrets and our protocols and everything else because your emergency management and your emergency medical services are revered across the state, and that makes my job easier. So thank you all.
Thank you, Chief Miller. We really appreciate all that you and your team have done, and congratulations on the awards and recognition. They're more than well-deserved. All right, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay. Last, but certainly not least, if Chairman Langford would come down, we have one final certificate of recognition. I'm out of the game now. Been retired four years in June, but I do still talk to some of my friends that are still principals, assistant principals, and administrators in Sumner County, and they have nothing but the highest regards and remarks for this guy right here for his leadership and for what he allows them to do at their particular school. So I want to recognize you tonight, a resolution honoring Mr. Scott Langford. Whereas Mr. Scott Langford, Assistant Director of Instruction for Sumner County Schools, was named Tennessee's 2021 Supervisor of the Year by the Tennessee Department of Education, an award recognizing administrators who have created educational opportunities for Tennessee students through their dedication, leadership, and vision. And whereas Mr. Scott Langford began his distinguished career in education as a teacher at Forest Park High School in Georgia, served as principal at White House High School before accepting his current position as the Sumner County Schools Assistant Director of Instruction, where he works very tirelessly and hard to enable and empower teachers, staff, and students to succeed. And whereas Mr. Scott Langford is an outstanding educational leader whose dedication is unwavering and his commitment for quality education to all students has been instrumental in Sumner County Schools' designation as an exemplary schools district by the Tennessee Department of Education. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioner meeting in regular session on this 22nd day of February 2021 that this body does hereby commend and congratulate Mr. Scott Langford for his commitment and diligent support of Sumner County Schools and his dedication to provide our students with the best possible education and to help them realize their full potential. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Mr. Scott Langford, and I so move.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Ms. Howell. Michelle. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me say, it'll be an honor to represent Sumner County as we move on, the competition moves on to regional and state level, so it'll be an honor to represent Sumner County. Honestly, like, this is hard for me. I grew up a tackle, and if you were an offensive lineman, you knew that the main purpose was not to stand up here and receive awards. It was to block. Somewhere, I imagine that Futsie Grantham would make fun of me right now for accepting an award as a tackle. I got my picture in the paper one time signaling a touchdown, and I thought it was the greatest thing ever, and I had it on my football locker, and he walked in and he said, "You know, if you'd block more instead of calling plays, you would score more of those touchdowns, Langford." So that's always kind of been the guidance of my life. But I do, you know, to me, what it signifies is it signifies the great children and parents that we have in Sumner County. We really do. Chief Miller echoed that about what a job and blessing it is to serve in Sumner County. It really is something, if you've grown up here your whole life, that you may not have the full picture of what a great place it is to live because we do have... We've got the most outstanding parents and children, and every day it's a huge honor and responsibility to have them entrusted to us because we do take it very seriously. You know, Dr. Phillips is one of the... You know, I've been around, as it mentioned, Georgia, several places in Tennessee, and Dr. Phillips is by far the... He likes this even less than when I praise him, but really a fantastic person to work with, collaborate with, and work for because he gives us the freedom to do what's best for kids, and I appreciate that every day. And we also have the greatest principals and teachers and coaches and support staff that you could ever ask for, and every day they just pour their hearts into our kids. And you see it. I mean, you know, Terry, I know you see it. Those of you that are around schools, you see it from SROs to teachers to teaching assistants to everything from top to bottom. Everybody pours their heart into our kids, and that's a real testament to Sumner County. You know, I know we've got a lot of business to do. I won't drone on, but I was thinking today as I drove over, you know, my great aunt went to Middle Tennessee Normal School and taught for 41 years, mostly at Howard. And, you know, I'm a third-generation Sumner County teacher. My grandfather dropped out after eighth grade at the Okana School and worked in the shoe factory and farmed tobacco to put his kids through college. And, you know, when you think of the power of education and the way it touches the lives of kids, it's a powerful thing that we don't take lightly, and it's a joy to see, you know, when you see these kids come up here every month when we recognize them, it's a joy to watch and see not just what they're doing now, but what they're going to do in the future and how they're excited to come back and serve Sumner County. One of the most powerful things we see every year is when we do our new teacher orientation, we always ask those that graduated from a Sumner County school, and it's exciting to see how many of our kids that graduated from Westmoreland or Portland or White House or Hendersonville Station Camp or Gallatin or Beach, Merrill Hodge, how many want to come back and serve by being at their home school or in a Sumner County school. And it's a great testament to the great people, the great community, the great commission, great school board, everything working together. So thank you all for this recognition. It really means a lot, and I appreciate each of you.
All right. And if you didn't know, if you've never gotten to meet, my wife Jane and my daughter Rebecca are right back there. They love to have attention, so. All right. We'll roll on now. We've got the Accepting the Bond of the Finance Director for Sumner County, Tennessee, Resolution 2102-01. Is there a motion to approve?
No motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Graves. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner DeWitt. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Resolution 2102-02, Accepting the Bond of the Register of Needs for Sumner County, Tennessee.
No motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, our consent agenda is before you. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner DeWitt. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, your written reports are in your packet. All right, on to the notaries. Is there a motion to approve our notaries tonight? Motion made by Commissioner Tucker, seconded by Commissioner Becker. Let's vote.
The election of notaries are on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-one votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Notaries are approved with 21 affirmative votes.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right, our standing committees, Committee on Committees, Mr. Goode. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goode. Education, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Highway, Ms. Hinton. Okay, thank you, sir. General Ops, Michelle. Okay. Emergency Services, Mr. Driver. Financial Management, Mr. Becker. Okay. Legislative, Mr. Ring.
Yes, sir. I move Resolution 2102-03, a resolution opposing proposed state legislation to modify healthcare facilities' certificate of need requirements and to oppose allowing the Health Services and Development Agency to expire. So moved.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goode. Mr. Becker.
There we go. Yeah, I just wanted to note on this one, whether it's direct or indirect, but I'm not quite sure, but I have a conflict due to my spouse's job, so I'll just be abstaining to this one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the public comments tonight. I wasn't too familiar with how this had passed to the state legislature, or at least attempted to last year, especially since it seems most or all Republican legislators and some Democratic legislators were on board with this in a bipartisan manner. But, you know, reading over this resolution and kind of thinking about the marketplace, it seems like what the state is doing to me is good legislation because it's intended to create more of a free-market approach to healthcare that's unencumbered by bureaucratic strongholds. And so, in my opinion, this certificate of need should not exist, and I've talked to state legislators about it, even some here that represent us in Sumner County, who felt that the only people objecting to this are those who don't want competition, and I can understand that. But, you know, I definitely see sometimes when you don't have competition in these types of markets, people can die and things can happen. You know, a good example is with the current situation with this COVID virus that we have. There are lifesaving treatments that are alternative treatments that aren't part of mainstream or political thought that are being denied by bureaucratic hospital boards or in being... These boards of hospitals being encumbered where patients are being denied care that has proven to be effective, such as ibromectin or stuff like that, that's really come out there before Senate hearings and Congress. And so there could something come up, you know, that would be competitive to hospitals where hospitals wouldn't give lifesaving treatment as alternative therapies for things that some other medical facility might come in and do that in Sumner County. So I don't want to do anything that would definitely restrict competition and lifesaving treatments that could be beneficial to individuals. So I am definitely opposed to this resolution that we're doing tonight, and I'd support our state legislators in eliminating the certificate of need and feel that it should not exist.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Mr. Ring.
Yes. Could we have Ms. Denon or and/or Mr. Holt explain why this was brought before the legislative committee?
I think Mr. Holt's next in the queue. Go ahead, Mr. Holt.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can tell you where this came. This came from Williamson County. I asked Mayor Rogers Anderson, which is a Republican in a Republican county, to share this legislation with us. The reason this is important, we have two hospitals here in Sumner County, and a hospital requires a certificate of need right now. The problem, if you do away with all of these certificates of need across the state, there's a lot of hospitals that are in very poor shape. In fact, rural hospitals are closing every day, and people's ability to get treated and a wide range of treatments is going away, and so it is concentrated in metropolitan centers. The problem when you do away with certificate of need is that means anybody can open a surgery center. Ultimately, hospitals operate under a different set of rules. They have to take everyone, no matter if they can pay or not. If we open enough of these other facilities and there's not any... There's not enough volume in our hospitals, especially in those when they do surgery, to make it profitable, then all they're left with is people who go to the hospitals with no form of payment. That's not sustainable. They will go broke. It's important to protect these valuable assets in our county. We're so fortunate to have two hospitals. Sumner Regional is one, is the largest private employer in the county with high-paying jobs. The other hospital is TriStar in Hendersonville with many other high-paying jobs. So it sounds good in theory, but in actuality, you can practice about anything you want to, and if you want alternative treatments or anything else, you can go to physician. But to put our hospitals in jeopardy, I think, is shortsighted and is dangerous, and I think it's something we regret because in the end, the only hospitals that will be open if we go down this path is going to be in large metropolitan areas like Nashville, Memphis, Knoxville, Chattanooga. So that's the intent of the legislation, to even the playing field so every hospital has a chance to compete. You open up the barn doors, anybody can come in with a surgery center and gleam off the very, very profitable surgeries and leave everything else to the hospitals.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Mr. Mansfield.
Hearing County Mayor Holt speak a little bit, it sounded like, I guess, who we're petitioning with a little misguidance. I don't know what the regulations that are where it's highly regulated and where hospitals are tied in certain ways, but it seems like we should be petitioning... meaning the state or the federal government in order to reduce those regulations so that our hospitals are more competitive and profitable versus keeping other people out. You know, again, if you go to a hospital, for example, with COVID, there are certain protocols that you can't get other protocols, and so somebody could die needlessly in a lot of cases just because they can't get some treatment out there. And so I don't want to do anything that would prevent some other kind of center coming in that could do some kind of lifesaving treatment or therapies in a competitive nature that would help hopefully shake the leaves off these bureaucratic trees that are hindering our responders and our doctors from actually doing what they need to do. So I don't know if we could move to amend this or refer it back so that we could petition the state, whoever needs to be petitioned, as far as like opening up these regulations that were spoken of being cumbersome for these hospitals in that manner. So I'm not exactly sure how to proceed with that, but I think that might be a better approach than petitioning the state. It seems like they're going to pass anyway of allowing this certificate to expire. Maybe we could focus our efforts elsewhere and be more productive.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Just looking on it real quick, if you Google "certificate of need, state of Tennessee", and then it'll take you to TN.gov, and it's pretty clear why we need it. It specifically states what the requirements are, and what it does is it not only protects your hospitals financially, because hospitals, just to kind of make sure everybody understands, and I'll simplify it, and Mr. Long or Ms. Denon chime in whenever I start getting it really wrong, these hospitals serve a multitude of people. So it doesn't matter what your insurance is, they're going to take you to the hospital. You're going to get service. And the way they pay for that is they supplement for all the people that don't have insurance and for the services that they don't get paid for, whether it's differences with the insurance companies, whatever it might be, by having elective surgeries. If you recall last year, and I'll give you the example of Vanderbilt, which is an extremely successful hospital, but Vanderbilt in the school actually separated two years ago for one simple reason, because of money, because the university, even with the half a billion-dollar endowment, was terrified of the fact that the hospital might start losing more money than they could make up for. The reason they were worried about this was exactly this type of thing. It became a certificate of need two years ago. And what happens is when you don't have a certificate of need, the elective surgeries that Vanderbilt makes its money off of to support all the other things that doesn't get money or doesn't get paid for, and I'll give you the example, this past year when we had COVID, one of the first things they eliminated was elective surgeries. And if y'all remember that, it was in the summer. Said, hey, we're, you know, the governor gone and said, "We're not going to do elective surgeries," which meant not just like plastic surgery, things like that, it meant like tonsillectomies. It meant things that insurance typically cover and that people have insurance can go for. Elective surgeries, knee replacements, whatever it might be, a whole gambit of it. Those are things that the hospital gets money back for, which makes up for all of the ones that they don't get money for, and it's how they kind of break even. When you take away a certificate of need, what you've done is you've allowed anybody that wants to come up and throw out a sign in front of her door to start having these minor surgeries, to start doing all these elective surgeries and surgery centers, which also doesn't meet the same requirements as a hospital. There's surgery centers in Sumner County. There's an ear, nose, and throat one in Gallatin, right by where you get your tag or you get your mission. There's several different surgery centers. They're still required to meet specific certificate of needs. They have to do certain requirements to make sure they fall within the state guidelines. When you get rid of the certificate of need, and just so you know, there's 36 states in the Union that have certificate of need. We're one of them, including the District of Columbia. So it's a fiscal and financial model that allows hospitals to stay viable. We're already suffering in the rural areas because those hospitals can't keep up. What happens is they don't have elective surgeries, and if you watch it, they'll start losing more and more money, and that's how these hospitals end up shutting down. If you want to protect your hospitals, Skyline Hendersonville, which are vibrant parts of our economy, which are vibrant parts of our community, which help us to continue to strive and be successful, you've got to keep this. It's a simple, no-brainer kind of thing. You can say whatever you want about capitalism, everything else, it's a bunch of crap. What happens is this is what protects hospitals from being undermined by people that are just going to come in and make money, plain and simple.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Driver.
I'm just curious as to what it takes to get one of these certificates. I know I've seen several, you know, these care centers and things, not necessarily a surgery center, but, you know, the walk-in clinics and things like that that have been put up, some in Portland, different places like that. So what's the... Can somebody say like kind of what the threshold is for somebody to get one of these certificates to be able to open a business or in any way?
Go ahead, Mr. Holt.
You have to go before the State Board of Health, and you have to go through a board and explain why it's needed in the community. And Commissioner Taylor is exactly right. What's happened is these small surgery centers are coming in, and they're gleaming all the cream off of the hospital services and taking the profitable areas and leaving, if you took it to extreme extent, you got rid of all these certificates of need, and they didn't have to go show that there was a need out in the community, it would basically break these hospitals. And you can't just fill the hospitals full of people who can't pay. They've got to be able... They've got to have a model where they can make enough money, they can treat everyone. Ultimately, you took it to its final conclusion, there would be no hospitals, there'd just be surgery centers. Those who could pay would get taken care of, and those who couldn't would, I guess, never receive surgery or go to General Hospital downtown Nashville. I don't know what you would do. But you actually have to go through a process. I've been through that process a couple of times with the Hendersonville Hospital and Sumner Regional Hospital because they have to renew those every once in a while. So it's a long process to make sure that they are a full-service hospital and what they're doing. But even these surgery centers have to go through that process, too. They're just limited in what they can do.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Pretty simple, just inquiring why there's not a bill number included in the resolution. What bill are we opposing? By bill number?
Do we know the bill number?
I don't. Like I said, this came through. It's not in terms...
Okay. If there's not a bill number attached to it, I suspect it went through Williamson County before the legislature had given it assigned a bill number, Mr. Taylor.
But it was passed last year.
No. Well, it was moving through when they shut down for COVID.
Oh, okay.
So it has to have a new number when it comes into this assembly year. Mr. Mansfield.
Is it true... Are there any... Is it true that hospitals have to approve of any new centers coming into, I guess, a region or a county or a city? It's my understanding that they do. Is that not correct?
That's not correct.
As part of that, okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mansfield. All right, there's no one else in the queue? Let me just... We've been on this for a while. Let me remind everybody, the resolution is to oppose proposed state legislation regarding healthcare certificate of need. So a yes vote is to send this to our legislative delegation to express to them that we're opposed to this. A no vote is to not send that resolution to the state legislature. That's clear as mud, but let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With 13 affirmative votes, the resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right, Mr. Ring, 2102-04.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution authorizing the mayor of Sumner County to sign a proposal with Tennessee Department of Transportation for state projects and federal projects, basically a bridge over Little Trammell Creek. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schell. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Commissioner Chris Taylor.
See, look, Mr. Kemp, it's been a couple months, and I didn't touch it. All right. For Budget Committee, first I'll answer Jeremy's one. The reason the iPads were included, first and foremost, it was state-approved. If the state wouldn't approve it, we weren't purchasing it. And the reason it's applicable to COVID or any other thing is if the county building got shut down again, what we found was that kind of brought everything to a grinding halt. If we have the iPads, we do two things. One, we can push out all the agendas, information, everything else, packets we have for everybody. And two, it gives everybody an access to Zoom meetings or whatever service we happened to use at that time. So the thought was, when we talked about it, was we need to make sure that we can provide government functions if this building shut down. One of the ones we discussed that day was actually the planning department and, you know, having printers that are portable printers for them, to have better laptops and better devices that could have hotspots and other things. So this was just an extension of it. It was an opportunity for us to make sure every commissioner had it, and that way we don't have to worry about if, heaven forbid, we have a flood and the room gets washed out, or if something happens where we can't meet, we'll still be able to meet and we'll be able to push out all the information everybody needs in a way that we know everyone's going to get it. And so, and again, first and foremost, it just had to meet state... The state approved it, so we couldn't have done it if it went under their guidelines. All right, with that being said...
Hang on, I'll show you. Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. So I guess, again, this is just one where I have a problem with it. It's like, when you look at, we're getting federal money, we continue to declare these states of emergency every seven days so we can get federal money, get state money, and just keep this thing going and going and going. And as far as getting funds allocated to us, and then, you know, I remember we gave bonuses or raises to the EMS directors and supervisors in the spring, but I know that I don't know if anything was done for the employees. And so, you know, that $38,000 can maybe go towards EMS and the actual other 130 employees or 125 employees, I just, you know, for giving them a one-time bonus. I mean, I just think there's a lot of different things. All of us have computers. We've obviously been doing Zoom, so we always get emails every week with the packets. We can download them ourselves. I don't think anybody in here needs an iPad. It's just a way of me of looking at just frivolous spending that I didn't think was necessary, and of course, it wasn't discussed, and so we never had an opportunity to do that. So I guess I disagree that we do need that. So I guess I disagree that we do need that in any capacity, because I think we're all capable as, you know, part-time legislators, you know, legislators with full-time jobs, you know, uh, coming up here one or two nights a, a month, um, to need that kind of technology. And I just think that we could have spent that on something else different. So, I mean, I, I would love to see, I, I don't need one, so I'm not going to be accepting one. I'd love to see mine get donated to maybe a, um, some type of nonprofit staff that has lost funding because of COVID or had problems. I mean, I would love to see some, some more individual or, or unit in need or service in need of that, if, if we can't give it back or sell it. Um, you know, and that's just how I feel about it. So I would definitely, I feel there's a better use of that than, than going towards me personally. So I, it's not something I, I'm planning on taking, and I do decline that expenditure on my behalf. So, um, so I'm not sure what we could do about that, if it's, if I can make a motion to do that, or if I can ask that be done during the nonprofit budgetary process. Um, you know, because I know there's 32 of them purchased with iPads and keyboards for $38,000 and for only 24 commissioners, so I'm not sure who the other eight are going towards. But I just think there's a better need for that. You know, I just see better needs around the county that are actually COVID-related needs, uh, and not iPads for commissioners. So that's all I got to say about that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Yeah, being down here for a little while, um, and being on the Budget Committee before, I remember when a, a commissioner brought purchasing iPads up during the legislative process. That was probably nine years ago, 10 years ago. Well, media was there and it, you know, stories were done about it, and he was, he was pretty well chastised, pretty good for wanting to spend, uh, county money or government money, it's government money if it's county, state or federal, on iPads. So I was a little bit upset when I saw, when I got that email telling me I'm going to come in and sign a paper and do all this when I never even attended a meeting where it was discussed, the actual purchase of the iPad. So, you know, uh, I've got, as you well know, constituents in my district that doesn't have access to public water. So, uh, that, you know, you get tired of hearing that, I'm sure, but the, the fact doesn't go away, doesn't go away. There, it's still there. The issue's still there. So, uh, like I said, I was just a little bit perturbed by getting an email from an IT department instructing me on something I had to do. I, I'm not taking an iPad. I've got two iPhones. I don't need something else to have to keep up with, to be responsible for, that the, that the taxpaying citizens paid for. So I just wish that we do stuff like this in the future. You know, we wouldn't, I kind of feel like the money that was approved in September, I believe it was, it was kind of one of them resolutions where you approve it and then you find out later what all was in it. Because that's kind of what, what happened here. You know, it was nowhere spelled out, and anything that I've been able to discover, they said, we're buying iPads. So who's making decisions for me and the planning commission and other people if it's not going through the committee process and being debated in the committee process to make a purchase such as this? And that's not open and transparent government. And I, I'd, I'd like my objection recorded on this tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Mr. Becker?
The, um, I won't really get into the comments that are already made, but what, one thing I was going to maybe suggest or recommend, however we do it, is, you know, I, I brought mine tonight and pulled up the agenda, but like, like all this paper that gets printed, like I would love, like, if, if we got, if we got alternate means, I would love to stop printing, no telling how much cost, there is not only paper, but the printing costs, I know that, you know, the ink is terribly expensive. So I, I would like to recommend, however that happens, for that to happen.
I think that's a good idea. I think if, if you're not going to take your iPad or use it or use an electronic device, if you would just let, uh, Banner Leah know or, uh, Mr. Kemp, then we can probably forego printing. You know, obviously, we'll have some last-minute things that will have to be put on the desk, but if you would let them know, then we could cut significantly back on printing. I think that's a good idea as we move towards paper. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Becker. Uh, Ms. DeWitt?
I was just going to add, um, really great segue, thank you, Commissioner Becker. The, the idea of purchasing iPads for commissioners actually came up during the budget discussions last fiscal year. Um, we, I actually specifically brought it up related to the fact that we do kill a tree or so every time we meet, especially with budget committees and some of the other large committees where we print an inch or more of paper. And so the idea of starting to put iPads into, um, certain committees at a minimum was, was what we approved in our original budget. It was part of the IT budget, uh, it was discussed as part of the IT budget coming into this fiscal year to start bringing iPads into use for some of the committees to, to begin to address the issue that Mr. Becker just brought up. So, um, the, the timing of the COVID money became a compelling additional use for why these iPads would be, uh, so useful in a time where we, we've been meeting virtually. So it, it coupled together, but it really addressed both needs as well, in my mind.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Uh, Commissioner Mo Taylor?
On that topic about in the committee and stuff like that on using iPads, we, we went through this, we went through a very tedious process of, of getting our committee meetings, the possibility of being recorded if the chairman chose to, to use the owl at that meeting. We're not consistent on that whatsoever. So how are we going to be consistent on using iPads?
Well, I, I think like, I'm, at this point, we're moving way outside the boundaries of...
Same thing, electronic devices and recording meetings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right, Commissioner Chris Taylor?
I'm not the sharpest guy, and I miss a lot of stuff, but I sure can pick up on a threat. Call the news if you want to. I'll gladly do that interview, and I'm not worried about it at all.
All right, let's move back to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, look, let's move on. I ruled him out of order. Let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Resolution 2102-03, oh, I'm sorry, 2102-05 appropriating 100, or $18,320 from the general fund for liability coverage, risk management. Ms. Deniman, reviewing our policies, realized that we do not have a rider for cyberterrorism. We're all confident in Mr. Kerry's ability to keep them out, but regardless, if something were to happen, it would be detrimental as far as having to redo our servers, everything else that could hit millions of dollars. This is a policy that a lot of places, or just about everybody has now, for whatever reason, it wasn't included in our previous ones, so she felt we needed to add it immediately. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Stewart. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, Commissioner Taylor?
Yes, sir. 2102-06 appropriating $160,000 from Capital Projects Fund for the Health Department phones. This is obviously a needed inference, and what it is, is their, their system's just antiquated and archaic, and this is something they've been needing for a little bit, and it, this came to light throughout the past nine months, obviously. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nipper. See no one in the queue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I have Commissioner Mo Taylor voting no. Any other noes? Okay. Let the motion pass with one negative vote and 21 affirmative votes. Motion passes. Okay, Commissioner Taylor?
Yes, sir. 2102-07 appropriating up to $90,000 for the EMS ECC and $200,000 CAB camera systems for, uh, capital for the building. When this came up in budget, we discussed it, and we didn't feel as appropriate to decide for the entire county on something that magnitude. I felt it needed to go to the full commission, and so we asked it be passed on for that. What it is, is Mr. Kerry's been looking at a system that would be a countywide system where we'd have whatever camera system he chose, it would be one that we could continually add cameras to it, and then the software would be downloadable to a desktop, and anybody that had access to it could in turn view the cameras. And we wanted a county-wide system, so that way we don't have a duplication of, say, there's a system for the courthouse, there's a system for parks, there's a system for the hangar where the helicopter is, whatever it might be. We didn't want to keep buying software and then in turn, in turn cameras. So what we asked him was to research it, find one system that would be big enough that it could handle all the needs of the county. He's done that. When we look at it, the ECC, we're saying up to 90,000 because that's the essence we got for that. Their cameras don't work, there's a few that still do. We've had, uh, employees' cars vandalized, we've had, uh, things stolen from there, we've had people break through the gates. Aside from the, the personal property and the danger to employees, because you've got people working 24/7 there, is also the fact that that's a Homeland Security system and a site, because it reaches, uh, all of our county, it does all, fire, EMS and everything else, it's supposed to have cameras, it's supposed to have certain security systems and at a certain level, and we're not there right now, so we need to do that. As far as the, uh, 200,000, the 200,000 was actually for this building, replacing the cameras that are in here, but also that, if you're not aware, there, there aren't any cameras outside on the parking lot or any of the surrounding area. This would include the parking lot, putting them out to where we could, uh, better check everything and protect the people when they come and go. And it's as simple as that. I so move, and I do that for discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Chris Taylor makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Goode. Uh, Mr. Lawing?
Um, I was going to, I talked to the IT department today, and one thing I wanted to point out to the chairman, um, Chris Taylor, is that the $90,000 is for the EMS only. It has EMS slash ECC because they were in the same building, but it is only to cover cameras for the EMS. I'll make sure everybody's clear on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawing. Uh, Mr. Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, kind of reflecting back to the public comments, I know it's appreciation for safety and, and especially for out in parking lots and everything else. And so I know that, I, I believe these funds, if I'm not, not mistaken, are coming from the unrestricted funds that we had left over from our October meeting, that $1.4 million, is that where this is coming or not? Does that have to be spent by the rest of the end of the year or? Where, so where's, is this for Capital Projects?
Local Capital Projects.
What, um, do you, do you mind if I ask what happened to that $1.4 million left over from October for unrestricted, or is that out of bounds?
Well, I mean, it's one of those, this isn't the resolution right now. We'll gladly discuss it if you want to, I'll sit afterwards and talk to you about it, Jeremy.
Well, the only reason I, I bring this up is, um, I know that the state is, during Governor Lee's latest, I guess, state of the state, um, what came out of that is, I think the state is giving more money to counties, again, in the form of a grant this summer, $1.9 million is being allocated to Sumner County for the 2021, 2022 budget cycle. Um, part of that, it, it is somewhat restricted, there are six categories, and one being capital maintenance, which included modifications of facilities for safety issues specifically. Um, so I don't know if that could be something to move, um, to defer this until that budget cycle, um, for grants instead of pulling out of capital, local funds, because it actually would maybe fall into that.
David, would it be possible, I mean, obviously, we haven't been awarded that money, so that's one of the ones, we try not to spend anything we haven't gotten, but to use local capital for that, and then what Jeremy's saying is if we did actually get that awarded this summer, and it was those conditions the governors talked about, we could reimburse local capital for it? No, okay, never mind.
We could do that, and also the cameras down at the EMS, talking to IT, they're down to very few cameras that work. The first one says EMS ECC, it's actually just, like, it's just EMS, they're...
They say they're actually down to very few cameras that actually work over at the EMS station now, on the whole system.
Mr. Mansfield, are you, were you done or not?
Well, I, I, basically, I, I'm not sure if you'll allow me to do this, but, um, I'll try it anyway.
Okay.
Give me a for effort, right? Um, I, I know we've had issues in here with audio, you know, especially during COVID, and I know during the August meeting, during the Comer Barn hearing, I guess what we'll call it, that all the citizens out there couldn't hear anything. Um, it seems that we have glitches sometimes in here. Um, I, I would like to move to, uh, amend this, to add $250,000 for upgrading the audio system here and video if necessary, uh, for, basically for transparency, better governance, and so I'm not sure if you'll, again, allow me to do that.
I don't think that would be appropriate for this resolution, Mr. Mansfield, but I think what we can do is we can, I can refer that to General Ops and ask them to investigate upgrading the audio, uh, equipment in here. Um, and I think like, then they can gather, I mean, probably 250,000 would do it, but they can get us a price tag.
And I'm just kind of guessing.
And Jeremy, we'll add it to, we'll put it on the budget for, for next month, and what we'll do is we'll appropriate up to 250,000, so once they're done with it, we won't have to sit and wait for another month, and we can get it rolling.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think we can handle that that way and move according to...
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Yeah, I was more on the, uh, the building, but as, as people's been discussing it, raising some concerns, uh, that I would really like to see this, this room right here addressed. There needs to be cameras in this room other than what's usually being used to video our meetings, because, I mean, it's like a dead pocket in the building, and anything can happen, and you don't have cameras. So is that included?
I mean, Commissioner Taylor, do you know if it's included, cameras in here, like security cameras inside the chamber?
David, what, I'll say it this way, Mo, it was throughout the entire building was what the, the quote was for necessarily, but it's, it's just kind of a guestimate quote. If we want to do what Jeremy's saying, I don't know if that would be separate. I mean, I'm assuming you're still going to have the security cameras in here, because they'll need to be on 24/7, because the cameras we have for when we're doing business are only on when we're doing business.
Exactly.
To me, it would make sense that security would, you'd have an overlap in this room.
So let me, let me add this to it. Our intent, if we vote for this, our intent would be to include security cameras in here so we could monitor.
It also includes the parking lot.
And the parking lots.
The current parking lot has no cameras.
David, can you clarify for ECC, too? Because I thought we were including ECC on this.
The, the $90,000 is for EMS, it said ECC also because they're in the same building. I talked to IT this morning, but I seen this, and they said, no, it's for EMS. The EMS has the current system that's about to go down to two, three, four cameras. The issue in this building, there is absolutely no cameras in the parking lot, not in the stair videos, as you're saying that in here. And then all these cameras are out here, all of them on systems which is spending... We're basically throwing good money out to buy it, and we're paying at this point to do a close-up.
I, I think as long as we can make sure that the intent of the commission, and if we vote for this, and if you disagree, you can join in, is that we would include the parking lots, every aspect of this building to make it safe and secure. Does that, Commissioner Taylor, does that get at what you're looking for?
Part of, I'm not...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, and another thing, I, I think that, that the camera systems that we use, and this may need to go to somewhere else, but I think if a citizen made a request for a public record of something that took place within this building, that they should be allowed access to those cameras, i- if it's a recorded copy of those cameras. And I don't know what we, we would need to do.
I think as we get close to it, what I would suggest is that we have the county attorney review that and bring, bring a policy forward to legislators. I would guess that's going to require a policy, because you do have, like, I know, like, I can just speak on behalf of, like, the schools, you know, like with bus video and things like that, like, there's a procedure, because we have to turn it over to the police first. So I think we probably, like, I don't think we can make that policy tonight, but I do think it's something we can work with legislative on.
Well, and, and I'm, you know, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel on what people are already doing, because I know that you, you, you can get certain recordings of this building now.
Yeah.
But it, it takes a while.
Yeah, yeah.
But the other thing that was brought up is, we talk about the ECC Center and their cameras being non-functional, people stealing stuff in the parking lot. That building ain't five years old. It was open in 2017, wasn't it?
This emergency services building? It's not ECC?
Well, it, it was mentioned during this conversation that the ECC...
Yeah, that's what Mr. Lawing was saying. It's EMS.
But it was mentioned during this discussion that the ECC cameras weren't working.
No, that's my fault. I was just lumping them all together.
It was EMS, it's EMS.
Okay. As long as we don't have a building that's not five years old that we put cameras in, now they ain't working.
Hang on, yeah, we will amend with that objection. Maker in second. You're good. We'll remove ECC from the title of the resolution. So everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All right, Mr. Tinsley.
Oh, I just want to point out that over a year ago, myself, Ms. DeWitt, Ms. Ackles, who isn't here, and a few other people whose names aren't coming to my head, because it's been a while since we met, and the commissioner behind me brought up to put new camera system and audio in this room instead of spending money on, on kind of a temporary Band-Aid fix, and was told that that wasn't something that they wanted to do at the time. So I think as we move forward in finding new ways to, to capture moments that happen in this room, we should remember that we had the opportunity to do that well over a year ago, and it was decided in that committee that they were, that wasn't something they wanted to do.
Mr. Mansfield.
Hang on one second. Go ahead. I have to disagree with that comment, sir.
Okay. Hey, y'all, I'm going to rule all this out of order. We're talking about security cameras. Let, let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your, well, no, resolution is now on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 21 affirmative votes, resolution is approved on first and final reading.
Okay. Commissioner Taylor.
Yes, sir. 2102-08, this is approving a one-time, 1% bonus for all employees of County General and Highway. What we've talked about, we've gone over and over, and so we kind of look at the numbers for COLA, and we've, we've discussed this throughout this fiscal year. And after looking at everything, we felt, we talked about it, if we gave 1%, we just don't think that that's a big impact for somebody right now. And we really still want to look at the numbers a little bit more, a couple more months, honestly, before we commit to something like that. But what we did feel was, we've got, which I think David said, it's around 400,000, is what it'll take for a one-time, 1% bonus for everybody that they'll get for, you know, for a year's worth of salary, 1% of their yearly salary, one time on a check. And we thought that's actually going to help people a little bit more, kind of get out of a little bit of a hole that we've had this past year with COVID and everything else. And then we're still looking tentatively at, and I'll just let you all know, it doesn't have anything with this resolution, but 3% overall improvement for the budgets in, for next fiscal year, which obviously depend on what the department heads do, that can be for COLA or however they so choose it. But this one is just a one-time bonus for all employees, and we just felt it was the best way. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goode. Mr. Becker.
Yeah, a couple of questions. As I was looking through this agenda, and then I went back and watched the Budget Committee meeting and pulled up that agenda, there was a couple of things that I wasn't quite clear on, and I think you just, you stated it, but I just want to make sure my understanding's correct. So this one, this 1% is a, is a bonus, and it does not include increasing their base salary up that 1%. So this, the base salary stays the same, this is a 1% bonus.
Yeah, a 1%. It's a one-time 1% bonus. I'll make it, if they made $100 in a year, they'd get $1 as a bonus that day.
When their base salary would still be 100?
Right.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's good. And then, refresh my memory, did, did, in this last budget cycle, did the employees get zero, did they get a 0% increase?
Yeah, we did it zero. In fact, we did zero improvements for everybody. There were a few where we had to, where there was just some issues that had come up that we knew, they'd said, hey, for the previous year, we know we're going to be short, and some different things, but for the most part, everybody was a 0% improvement. And obviously, that carries over to 0% raises too. There were a few, like, we had to do a market adjustment for EMS.
Mm-hmm.
And we did that one, and we had to do a market adjustment that was approved by the other municipalities for ECC, which we initially voted no on, but were brought back and voted to do that one.
Okay. So, so I know this one specific is County General and Highway, but was it, was it 0% besides the exceptions? Was it a 0% for all County General Highway and school?
No, we didn't, school didn't do any, my, school didn't do any raises last year either. I mean, so.
That's what I was saying. Was it essentially 0% the entire county, school, and everybody?
Yeah, across the board, nobody got anything.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Graves.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so this is saying if I make $30,000 a year, I'm going to get 1% raise bonus?
Yes, sir.
Or if I make $80,000, I'm going to get $1,000.
Yes, sir.
1% raise.
1%, one time.
Bonus. But do y'all think that's fair? Why, why didn't you put all the money in, it made it a lot easier, all in the same pot, every employee gets the same amount of money?
Mr. Graves, I know what you're saying. The $30,000 employee gets a $300 bonus, the $80,000 employee gets an $800 bonus. We just felt the simplest way was to, to do it on 1%. And it's based, and obviously, some employees are paid more because of their job descriptions and their responsibilities, so that the bonus went with that.
So you're saying that the custodians here is not as important as the?
Absolutely not, sir. That's furthest from what we're saying. What we're saying is you have to base it on some economical point, much like when we do a 3% COLA, if you make $100,000, you're getting more money than the person that makes $30,000. But they both got a 3% raise on their, their COLA. I, I don't know of any other way to do it.
I understand that.
Yeah. We've defined what certain people make, and they're getting a bonus off what they make.
The simplest way, Mr. Chairman, I believe, is just put it in a pot and split it right down the middle. Everybody gets the same amount of money, and we move on. It's the simplest way, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Graves, if you want to put amendment to that, you certainly can, sir, but that's, the resolution we have is 1% for everybody based on their salary.
Was that even talked about in that discussion?
No, sir.
I'll amend that motion to say that we put all the money in the pot, everybody gets whatever that amount comes up.
Okay. We've got a motion by Commissioner Graves to take the money designated for the 1% raise and to divide it evenly among employees as designated in the resolution. Motion made by Commissioner Graves, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. We've got three people in the queue. I'll go through and ask each one if you prefer to speak to the amendment or the main motion. Now, Mr. Wright, you're up first. Do you want to speak to the?
Main motion.
Main motion? Okay. Mr. Witt, do you want to speak to the amendment? Okay.
In regards to the amendment and the way it's proposed, I, I would vote against that partial, partially or largely because the, no, I would vote for it, I would vote against it entirely, because this bonus right now is really trying to make up for the fact that back in June of last year, when we looked at this fiscal year budget, we were not comfortable making any cost of living adjustments for all of our employees, given the situation. So this, this one-time bonus, in my mind, is, is catching up from the fact that we weren't able to make those, those cost of living adjustments for their base pay salary back in July of last year. And so it is commensurate with their, their salary. I completely agree that everybody has, has done a great job, and we don't want to minimize, but this bonus is tied more to their salary based on the fact that we were not able to adjust their, their cost of living adjustment like we normally would in a normal annual cycle salary review.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Mr. Becker, you on the amendment or the motion, main motion?
I'll draw that. She answered my question.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Becker. All right, I see no one else in the queue. The amendment is a yes vote, is to go with a smoothed-out bonus across the board. A no vote is to strike down the amendment and move back to the main motion. Mr. Hinton, did you? No, he's on the main motion. Yes, sir.
The amendment is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Four affirmative votes, the amendment fails to carry. We're back on the main motion.
Okay. Mr. Wright?
We have people in this county that, from the time COVID hit until this hour, have worked every single day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They have answered calls, not knowing what they were going into, not knowing if the call they answered whenever they walked in at home, if they would be taking this COVID virus back home to their family. Now, if you don't think they're worth 1%, folks, you need to walk the streets. Come walk in our shoes, see what we do.